Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, May 28, 6:00 PM. Call this meeting to order. Do I have approval of the agenda? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approve 6-0. Next we have invocation, Councilmember Paul.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for everyone here tonight and that they will return home safely. Lord, there are several families that are going through much grief at the moment. I humbly ask that you would come to them and provide the comfort they need to come to terms with all that has happened. I pray that your healing touch will comfort them in this time of need. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Next, down to approval of the amendments. Regular meeting dated May 13, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Next, down to public presentations. We'll be presenting Ms. Shonda Jefferson, 2020 South Carolina Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'll turn it over to our clerk of court. Clerk of council. I've been in law enforcement too long, I guess, ain't I? Ms. Davis, thank you.
In recognition of Shonda Jefferson, State of South Carolina 2020 Teacher of the Year, whereas Fairfield County Council seeks to recognize and demonstrate their appreciation to Ms. Shonda Jefferson, an exceptional teacher who passionately and vigorously displays concern for improving the community and empowering students to succeed. And whereas Ms. Jefferson was born in Augusta, Georgia, and raised in Beach Island, South Carolina, after graduating from Midland Valley High School in Aiken County, she attended the University of South Carolina and in 2009 she received her Bachelor of Science in Biological Sciences with a minor in General Education. In 2011, she then received her Master's in Teaching Secondary Sciences with emphasis in Biology and General Sciences. She is currently a graduate student at Columbia University in New York. And whereas Ms. Jefferson's mother, Martha Jefferson, who is the matriarch of the family and Shonda's first teacher, taught her to value education and to work hard to achieve her goals. She also taught by example to have love and compassion toward others. Shonda received unconditional love from her dad and stepmom, Henry and Helen Harris, along with support for her dreams and aspirations. Shonda's siblings, Angel, Erlene, Earl, Willie, Melody, and Tamela, have always loved, encouraged, and celebrated their baby sister. Shonda's uncle, Dr. Frank Robertson, was a longtime educator, godfather, and mentor of words and wisdom who positively shaped her view of education. And whereas, Ms. Jefferson began her teaching career at C.A. Johnson High School in Columbia where she taught for four years. During this time, she was named Teacher of the Year for 2014-2015. She was also named the 2014 Outstanding Biology Teacher of the Year for South Carolina. She then taught one year at Airport High School in Columbia. She currently is the Science Department Chair, STEM Lead Teacher, and Science Teacher at Fairfield Central High School. Shonda was also named the Fairfield Central Teacher of the Year and the Fairfield County School District Teacher of the Year for 2018-2019. Shonda holds all her students from C.A. Johnson High School, Airport High School, and Fairfield Central High School in high esteem and loves them all. And whereas Ms. Jefferson chose a career in education because of her love for children and desire to help people. Shonda knows that on each day when she walks through the doors of her classroom, she is preparing students for the future, which in turn will impact the world. Success begins in the classroom and teachers such as Shonda are responsible for inspiring success in students. Further, Shonda has strong faith and attributes her many successes to God. Jeremiah 29:11, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." And whereas Fairfield County Council fully realizes the standard of excellence set by Ms. Jefferson and feels that she is a dynamic force in the learning process of our children, the council wishes to publicly thank her and gratefully acknowledge her service in that she daily goes beyond expectations. Now therefore be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County do hereby proclaim their admiration and respect for Ms. Shonda Jefferson and bestow their highest regard and esteem for the manner in which she serves the people. The council and citizens are bursting with pride that Shonda has been named the State of South Carolina 2020 Teacher of the Year and Shonda is honored as an example of citizenship and service at its best in the county. So ordered this the 28th day of May, 2019.
That's a standing ovation, Ms. If you guys want to come take a picture, Ms. Jefferson.
Try to hold her back, huh?
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing? Y'all are great. It is such an honor and a privilege to stand before you as the 2020 South Carolina Teacher of the Year. And I'm beaming with pride to be here in Fairfield County because I absolutely love the kids here. I've only been here for three short years, but I've experienced the community, I've experienced the love that you all have towards the students in our schools. And every place that I've been, I've been in downtown, I've been, you know, in Lexington County. But I tell people that the kids here in Fairfield, they're the smartest kids that I've ever taught. And it just brings me great pride to talk about, you know, the most important thing that I do when I walk into the classroom on a daily basis is to build those relationships with my students. And, you know, even today, you know, as we mourn the loss of a couple of our students in the county, we were able to stick together as a family to get through this day with our students and with our teachers. And that just shows, you know, that Fairfield County, Fairfield County School District, this is truly a place of family, this is truly a place of unity. And I'm so happy that I'm able to represent this county and the great things that are happening here. So thank you all, the Fairfield County Council. Thank you, community, for just embracing me and bringing me in as your own. And I just want to just let you guys know that I love you guys and I'm so happy to have the opportunity to represent this county and the 50,000 teachers in the great state of South Carolina. So thank you all.
I'm sure council wants to respond or say something to Ms. Jefferson.
Good evening. And I'm just overjoyed. And I'm overjoyed for two reasons. I see the glory of God and what God is doing continuously in our lives and he has no respect of person. And I'm just honored. And I also thank on Dr. Green as he's always talking about promoting and getting excellent teachers and reaching beyond to bring such an awesome person to Fairfield County. I'm thankful for that. Thank God for your achievements, for all that you're doing for our children, but most of all for this county itself. You bring not just a teaching, but you bring a love and word that you said, relationship. The fact that you're building relationships with our youth, with our young people is so important. So I thank God for that. I thank God for you. Continue the good work and let him use you fully for his glory. Thank you.
Mr. Bill.
Let me begin by saying I'm so proud as a citizen of Fairfield County and a member of the council to honor Ms. Jefferson as Teacher of the Year for the State of South Carolina. I want to thank Mr. Robertson for the proclamation tonight. I sent him an email requesting that this be done. He sent me an email in return stating we already started. So that was a good thing. Amen. So I want the public to know that I'm so proud of her and the support system she has in place at the Fairfield County School District.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, you know, my daughter's in one of your classes and she would always come home talking about Ms. Jefferson and had me curious who was Ms. Jefferson. So I can see who you are now. Your demeanor speaks for itself also. Just want to acknowledge we have board members here from the school district here in support of you. Also, Dr. J.R. Green. That's a big thing. Dr. Green, would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. Oh.
Okay.
Absolutely. Jim Robinson, I won't be long, even though some people think I will. But on behalf of the Fairfield County School District and School Board of Trustees, entire Fairfield family, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging this tremendous accomplishment. You know, this is something that not only the Fairfield County School District should celebrate, this is something every single person in Fairfield should celebrate. I mean, Ms. Jefferson from Louisville, Wensboro, South Carolina. Fairfield County Schools is representing schools and teachers all over South Carolina. And very often when people think about excellence, when they think about greatness, they often don't think about those small rural, high poverty, high needs communities like Fairfield County. But this is indicative of the outstanding things that are going on right here in Fairfield County. And so I would ask everyone to embrace this. I would ask everyone to celebrate this because this is something that we all should stand behind and be proud of. Thank you, sir.
All right. Now down to public, I'm sorry, first public comment session. Mr. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
Yes, we have five who wish to speak tonight. First, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on the budget and the farmer's market.
I'm not sure.
Truly, this is a day that the Lord has made.
Ms. Workman, before you start, if you guys want to leave, you can. But if not, we're going to continue on, so.
You ready? I can start now?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Well, like I said, truly, this is the day that the Lord has made, Dr. Green. Glory, glory, glory. Good evening, council members. Jackie Workman, District Four. I would like for council to reconsider recreation for the rural areas, District Three and District Four, and recreation for Moses Bell District. And secondly, I attended the opening of the farmer's market. I must say, it was breathtaking. I was waiting until Trump walked in, but he never showed up. That's how it looked inside. Now, I have requested a list of all expenditures and minutes approving the rehabbing from county council 2018 and 2019 of the farmer's market. And I know you got it on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Brad Hoffman, speaking on the farmer's market.
Brad Hoffman, co-chair or co-manager of the farmer's market. I appreciate every council member that showed up for the grand opening, the ribbon cutting. So that day, we gave 245 tickets away and we had 25 bags from all of our local merchants donated stuff, from oil changes to car washes to a high-dollar hat in a hat box. All of our merchants gave us stuff for that grand opening day. So my guess is, is we had about 500 people there. There's been plus or minus from there. I'm hoping to see you all again. Last week, we had over 200 people with 18 vendors again. And everybody is so excited about the market. And I just do not know what else to say other than thank you very much for building that building. Most of our merchants that were open on Saturday downtown on grand opening had a heavier foot traffic than normal, so we are holding people downtown Wensboro. We are getting the word out. And the people in Ridgeway that donated stuff to us, it's all about Fairfield County and we had some great donations from all of our merchants from all over the county, plus some. So appreciate everything and hopefully we can keep this thing going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lisa Brandonberg, speaking on the farmers and artisans market.
Good evening. Lisa Brandonberg, District Seven. I have participated as a vendor, as an artisan at farmer's market. The staff did a beautiful job with the remodel of that building. It is absolutely wonderful inside. However, at 11 o'clock, it was 98 degrees inside that building. And at 12:15, I couldn't make it to 1 o'clock. Now, yeah, it was hotter than it normally is, but town was packed with the people that had come out to support and to buy from that farmer's market. And they won't keep coming to town, to all of the wonderful businesses down there, if we don't get some fans and some more air conditioning in there and for the water to work. There was no flushing facilities available yet. So if staff could take care of that and finish the job, I mean, it's limitless what can be hosted in that building. I was proud to see that many people come through and to get to visit with that many people that had come out to support the farmer's market. And it's not just those vendors. Those vendors have worked, some of them for over four years, to get people in this county. And I mean, they've been out in the parking lot over there next to the town clock, under tents. And one gentleman that's been there four and a half years, never been paid for anything, never asked for anything, he would bring tents in for the ladies so that they could sell their stuff out there for all those years. And I just think it would be in good nature if county would recognize those original farmers, founders of that thing and the ones that's been there faithful for all these years. But please go ahead and put the funds there to get that place cooled down and some water in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on ordinances.
Congratulations.
It's been a real pleasure.
Inte. It's an honor to have you with us, really is. My wife couldn't stop crying when she saw you on television. Okay. Why'd you push that button? I didn't start yet. Section 1237-135, Ordinances, Countywide Business Registration. County governing body may require a business registration throughout the entire county and may impose an administrative fee not to exceed $15. The fee is an administrative fee and must not be based upon business income. This is what you guys should be telling us when you're starting to write ordinances rather than me come up and tell you. However, it goes on and on. It's a long thing. I'm sure the attorney has read it and explained it to everyone. But in pursuant of this section, there's a Section 3, Article X. The state constitution is subject to provisions of Section 12-47-720. There's an exemption from ad valorem taxation, a homestead exemption. People over 65, people who are blind, people who are mindless, they get an exemption. I'd like to be included in that exemption if you don't mind. What I think would be a great ordinance, rather than constantly looking for ordinances to increase taxes, and I'm sure everybody's had about enough tax increases, why don't we get an ordinance that the county will adopt, that you folks can make a motion for? And the ordinance should be, I only have a minute left, that people who have ethics violations or owe money to the county or violations fees should be ineligible to hold office here. And if an applicant has a criminal record or a sex offender and is listed as a current sex offender, that person cannot be eligible to hold office in the county council. Anyone currently holding another elected official position cannot, for reasons of conflict of interest, be eligible to be a council member. That should be an ordinance we should have. I don't know why we don't. I don't know why we don't have qualifications for ordinance. To be a teacher, you've got to graduate, got to get a license to be a council member. You've just got to be able to sign your name and say, "I do." We need to change that. That should be something you all should want. Qualified, honest, honorable people in an ordinance. That should be how we do it. Of course, when I come up here and say things like that, I'll just say, "Good night." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the budget.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Vital signs. When you go to any medical facility, they immediately take your vital signs to measure at a high level your physical health. And that might be blood pressure, it might be temperature, oxygen level, et cetera. We need to do the same thing when we have large physical items to measure the health of physical ordinances. And I'm speaking of our budget specifically today. And I'd like to see in second and third readings, certain vital signs. And among those vital signs, and I hope you would speak to them tonight, one would be, how much is our budget? What have we approved so far? And what is the relationship to our budget that we've approved? To how much more is the budget than it was last year? And how much more is it or less than the projected revenue, not counting our, what we pull out from either reserves or from last year's funds? The difference between, just like you do your checkbook. How much are we spending? How much do we have to spend? How much income do we have? And what is our comparison to budgets last year to budgets this year? It's extremely critical and it would help us and it would help you diagnose the physical health of this particular budget. If you put it in the ordinance so we can read it, these, you know, we're only talking four or five numbers. It would help. But tonight, I would like to hear, before we even discuss it, you should know and we should know, the high-level vital signs of this budget. Is it a healthy budget? Is it one that takes into account how much revenue we've got coming in? Does it one that takes into account what type of increase over last year's budget? Is it one that takes into account how much more or less we spent than last year? These are all important vital signs and I'd like to hear them tonight. And for upcoming ordinances, I would like to hear that type of information for upcoming ordinances. At least by the, obviously you can't for the first one, but by the second ordinance, where are we headed? Where do we stand? What are our vital signs? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Segment One.
All right. Down to public presentations. We're going to defer to item, down to Item B when we get there due to no one speaking for the public hearing. Now down to Ordinance Resolution orders, be Item A, third and final reading. Ordinance Number 720, an ordinance to establish operating capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, to provide for the expenditure of revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to county government and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? It's been moved and I get a second? No second? Well. Y'all want to speak up? I can't hear. Is there is a motion on the floor? Is there any second? It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Paul.
I'd just like to say I cannot vote for this budget because it's up to 12% and has been an average of 5.5% annual increases for the last four years. Another big reason I'm not in favor of this budget is because it takes us back to across-the-board salary increases as opposed to the merit-based system that the last council worked for over three years to have put in place. So for those reasons, I cannot support this budget.
Chairman.
Mr. Trapp.
Like Mr. Paul as well, I cannot support this budget but on different reasons. In this budget, we don't have anything earmarked for, you know, the black communities in the county. We spent almost $200,000 for a fire station up in Lake Watery, which is predominantly white. We've spent over $100,000 on the farmer's market, which is a predominantly white area. I asked for $50,000 for one mini park, $100,000 for two mini parks. That was voted down. Mr. Bell asked for money for a recreation center. That was voted down. Every time that someone asks for something for the black community, it always said, "The taxes gonna raise." Well, is the taxes gonna raised about us spending the money on the farmer's market or putting the fire department up in Lake Watery? So I cannot support it.
Any other councilmember has anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, also on the merit-based system, I would like to see that continue to be in place. But I want to ask also, at the request of one of the citizens, if we could get an overall view where we are with the budget financially. If Mr. Taylor could kind of give us an overall view, what checks and balances, where we are.
Ms. Taylor, can you give us an explanation on the merit-based system that we discussed?
Certainly, I'd be glad to. Previously, we had put in a merit-based system where we ran into problems. And I think the concept of merit-based is what we should pursue and should strive toward. With our particular situation, it is tough, I will say, for us to judge an EMS worker on how many people they saved or a sheriff's deputy on how many people they arrested. We're not in the situation where we make widgets and we can, you know, judge somebody on their production. So it's tough for us to make that fit and we try to. But we also have the situation where we have large numbers of our employees or under-elected officials and they can decide whether they want to go forward with merit-based or not. So that makes it a little difficult for us to impose on an elected person what they can do. So the merit-based, while I think it is, you know, something we should strive to, in reality, it's very tough for us to implement.
Mr. Taylor, if the vote is 3-3, what happens to the budget?
Fails.
Fails.
Okay. I would like to amend, I would like to amend the motion to state that we add the $100,000 in there for the mini parks in Mr. Trapp District and the $800,000 in District One, if I can get a second.
Second, Mr. Bill. Motion's been made improperly second. Any discussion?
I just want to say something in regard to the Recreation Center in Ridgeway. I don't know if council knows or citizens know, but in the past couple of years, there was $150,000 spent on the Rufus Belton Park down there that the county purchased. There was also $100,000 for a EMS station that is next to the Rufus Belton Park. There was also a fire station that was put in Ridgeway that cost about a million dollars. There was also a library that was put in Ridgeway. We also helped the town of Ridgeway with Siwaltz. And we also helped the town of Wensboro, I mean, the town of Ridgeway with a water topper. So, you know, for it to be said that nothing was spent in Ridgeway is absolutely not true. A lot of things been done in Ridgeway, might not have been done when Councilman Bell was on council. But the previous council member got things done in his area and it might not have been on a gymnasium like Mr. Bell won't. But the Rufus Belton Park serves all denominations of people. The EMS station that serves all denominations of people. The fire station, the library, the Siwaltz. So money was spent in Ridgeway.
Mr. Trapp.
Mr. Taylor, what's our fund balance amount?
I will defer to Ann if you can tell me what it is. It fluctuates and I don't know if you have that number pulled right now. If you would like to wait, can you go pull that? Is that something you can get pretty quickly?
Okay, because, Mr. Taylor, I guess some of the numbers I've been hearing is is anywhere from between 12 to 22 million, depending on what day it is, whether you've had to do something to draw down, then get some revenues in, something.
Councilman Bell, I think that is correct. Again, it can be very high, our fund balance, obviously when taxes are all in. And then at the end of the year, when, you know, we're a year away from getting taxes, it can scrub bottom at 12 to 14 million. bottom at 12 to 14 million. But it can go as high as 20, 21, Ann's gone. But I think that's a good characterization of it.
Okay, so, okay.
Is there any further discussion in reference to Mr. Bell's motion?
Mr. Chair. Again, I voted against that, not voting it down, casting it out, but that's why I asked for an explanation of checks and balances. At this time, I don't see where we're in a financial state to do that, those particular projects at this time, maybe in the future, but not at this time. Not putting them off completely, but just not at this time, we're not financially stable to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trapp.
How did we come to that conclusion? Let's wait on the numbers. Let's wait on the numbers. Are we financially sound enough to build a fire station? Was we financially sound enough to spend over $100,000 on the farmers market? We don't know those answers.
The question I have, Mr. Taylor, is this. Let's just, let's make an assumption that we got about 14 to 15 million in fund balance. Okay? And if you did the projects that I just talked about, would we have to raise taxes?
Not if you pulled it out of fund balance, obviously, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you pull it out of fund balance, that's just money that we depleting it, correct?
That's correct.
But also, we, I think, if you look at the money that we're going to spend from the bond itself, counting the courthouse, okay, I think we're going to spend about 2.4 million on the courthouse, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and we're going to have about 1.1 million left in the bond.
There was, in our discussions the other day, and we had discussed some of this, the bond, there should be about 400 to 450,000 left out of the bond, because what we failed to mention the other day, and Denise will talk about this with the airport, we are looking to take the money out of the bond to do the gas station out there. So that would pull us down in the end to about 450,000 in the bond.
Okay, so that means, so if we spend 450, so that gives us 550 million, 400, I'm sorry, 1,000.
Well, around about half a million you'll have left in the bond, could be contributed toward some project.
So if we take that money, then, the $500,000 out of the bond, and just start on the work, okay? And one of the things that happened, you know, we talked to Ms. Connors from Council on Aging.
Yes.
Okay, there's some funding sources for, you know, I think maybe $350,000 or so.
And she said in 2020, there should be funds allocated.
Yeah. Let's suppose we just start on it. And I'll be willing to change that number to $400,000, so we can start the work and then do it.
Mr. Bell, if I may interject, it sounds like we want to postpone this third reading and go back to another budget hearing. Am I hearing everybody correctly?
I don't know. I'm hoping we can pass this budget here tonight, really, I'm being frank with you, because when we come back, I think it's just gonna, you know.
If I may.
Mr. Taylor.
The bond, you really, that's not, that's a separate discussion from the budget. That 400,000 or 500,000, you all can allocate outside of this budget process.
Right. And I understand that. So what I'm saying is, if we're willing to do that, that might be a perfect way to go and get through this budget. Because I can, you know, I want to do the right thing for the county.
We still have a motion on the table we need to vote on. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? Mr. Bell made a motion to allocate 100,000 from Mr. Trapp's mini parks. Mr. Bell, did you state where that 100,000 was coming from, if I'm not mistaken?
From the fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
We want to wait on those numbers. I mean, I think we would be fine with the 100,000, not a fund balance, that's not an issue, but she'll get those numbers in just a moment.
Well, if we want to take a quick five-minute recess, is that okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
All right. We'll take a reset. What time is it? 6:00? We'll be a reset at 6:35 for five minutes, be back at 6:40.
All the bell out there.
All right, this meeting is back in session at 6:50. At this time, we do have a motion on the table. I'm going to ask our county lawyer to at least come up to give us proper acknowledgement of what the motion was, please. Restated for us.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of council, the budget was up for a third and final reading. It was properly moved and seconded, brought forward for discussion, at which point in time, Mr. Bell made a motion to amend the budget on third and final reading, to add the following, as I understand it. Just want to clarify so everybody's all on the same sheet of music. From the general fund balance, an additional $800,000 to be used for a recreation facility in District One, and an additional $100,000 to be used for a park in District Three. As it currently stands right now, as my understanding based upon my notes, that is the motion that is currently before the body at this point in time.
Before I call for a vote, is there any further discussion with council? Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry.
The number was asked for, again, the number was asked by Councilman Trapp, as far as what our fund balance currently is. Our available, unencumbered fund balance, you've got to remember, we have deals that were cut in the past, such as with the hospital, where we have to have 4 million always set aside in an escrow account. But outside of those encumbered funds, the unencumbered amount that you have to spend in fund balance is 12,471,350.
The question, the one I just asked you about, okay, but it's showing, we got 24 million in there, but some of that, so you got 24 million, you got four, a total of 24 million, and you got four designated for the hospital, and you got another 12. So, again, 24 million. So if you minus the 4 million, you got 20 million, okay, for the hospital, so you got 20 million currently in fund balance.
Again, there's some other funds, again, with the library, when we have a millage rate and such, just assigned to those, while we have those and hold those funds, it is locked away for the library. So, but unencumbered, that is outside of all those funds, such as the library and such as the hospital deal and those kind of things, you've got 12,471,000 that is available, unassigned, essentially.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Bell's amended motion? All those opposed? Fails four to two. The amended motion. Now, back to the original ordinance. I already asked for a motion, if I'm not mistaken. Will you clarify for me?
Correct, Mr. Robinson, that motion is already, the ordinance for third and final reading is already before the council at this point in time. It's available for any further discussion or call for the vote.
Is there any further discussion with third and final ordinance reading? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
That motion ordinance fails because it's tied three to three. And if I'm not mistaken, we need to reschedule a budget, another budget workshop?
I would think so. I think that would make sense if we scheduled another budget workshop to discuss what council wants to change, so we can bring it forth, and hopefully get a positive vote.
Sounds good. On down to second reading, ordinance number 721, an ordinance certifying property located at 199 Maple Street, Winsboro, in South Carolina, Fairfield County, South Carolina, as an abandoned textile mill site pursuant to the South Carolina Textile Communities Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 65 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended. Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly seconded. At this time, if I could get Mr. Davenport to come, give us some discussion on it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Winsboro Fibers has asked us to support their, the rehabilitation of the facility that they bought from, I guess, Dura Fibers when they went bankrupt. So what we have is a notice of intent to rehabilitate, and Winsboro Fibers has the opportunity to get an income tax credit against their state income tax that they're pursuing. In order to that, they need us to, this ordinance is what they'll use as kind of evidence that they, that they, the facility was in fact, a textile facility. They have to show the D R that, and that they intend to, you know, they intend to rehabilitate it. So all we're doing is confirming that, and supporting that, their intent to rehabilitate the facility. I put an aerial over, I gave everyone an aerial just for information, but kind of a quick overview is, what they want to do is, they want to demolish Plant One, which is the long plant in the center of the facility. I believe they're leaving the weave room, the clock will be rehabilitated, which is a good thing, the admin building will stay. Plant Two, I believe that stays. And a portion of Plant One will be left, and they'll add on to that. They'll tear down a part of the building that's no longer usable, basically, it's low ceilings and structurally not sound. So they'll tear that down, and they're going to add, they're going to build back. So some of just the older portions of the building will be removed, and a new, a new building will be added back in there. I don't think the new building will be visible, so what you'll see, for the most part, when you pull up there, is what you have now, plus there'll be some aesthetic changes, it'll be nice, the clock tower and so forth will be rehabilitated as well. They're spending about over $6 million on the rehabilitation, demo and the rehabilitation, so it's a nice thing. They currently employ 19 people, I think, not to speak for them, but hopefully in the future, they'll be able to go to a second, third shift and add more people, 10 folks a shift, something like that. So that might be, you know, this is a good thing for the county, good thing for the town of Winsboro, they use a lot of power, water and sewer and so forth.
Any questions for Ms. Davenport?
Okay, thank you.
Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor, ordinance 721. Any opposed? Motion approves 6-0. 7-0, I'm sorry, 6-0. I'm thinking about Jim Ray. Now down to Item C, first reading by title only, ordinance number 722, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1, Rural Residential District One, to I-1 Industrial District of 116.22 acres owned by Fairfield County, tax map number 148-00-00-015-000. Property is located at Valencia Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's moved improperly seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approve 6-0. Now down to Item D, first reading by title only, ordinance number 723, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD, Rural Resource District, to I-1 Industrial District of 11.32 acres owned by Fairfield County, tax map number 8087-02-01-009-000. Property is located at Old Airport Road, Winsboro, South Carolina, 29180. Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly seconded, since there's no discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Hey. Sorry, did I get two nays? Motion approves 4-0. Now down to Item E, by first reading by title only, ordinance number 724, an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend the real estate ordinance number 717, establishing a tourism development fee pursuant to Section 6-1-500 subsequent of South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly seconded. There is no discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Approve 5 to 1. Item F, first reading by title only, ordinance number 725, an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend and restate the ordinance number 718, authorizing Fairfield County to establish a local hospitality tax to apply to all establishments which sell prepared meals and beverages located in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County pursuant to Section 6-1-700 subsequent of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly seconded, and there is no discussion being of this first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Approve 5 to 1. First reading by title only, ordinance number 726, an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to amend and restate the ordinance number 719, authorizing Fairfield County to establish a county business registration program to regulate businesses located in an unincorporated area of the county of Fairfield pursuant to Section 12-37-135 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Once again, this is first reading only by title, so there is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Approve 5 to 1. Now down to Boarding Commission Minutes. Each council member should have received as information only from Fairfield County Disability, Behavior Health, and Chamber of Commerce. Any questions in reference to that? There is no Boarding Commission appointments, no old business, new business. We have a request for a road name change from Guardian Way to M. Lilly Way. Mr. Taylor, can you give us a little discussion?
Yes, I will have Mr. Chris Clausen, our Planning Direct Community Development Director, come. This has been before the Planning Commission, as the process requires. And essentially, what we're doing is, we're trying to welcome M. Lilly to our community and rename the road from Guardian Way, which had been the previous factory that had been there, to now, again, M. Lilly. Mr. Clausen?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council. Yes, so this did go to the Planning Commission last month. It was approved, or rather, recommended unanimously. This is in compliance with our regulations. It also, it's not duplicate, obviously, and 911, it was already cleared with them, so there's no, there's no concern with that name. So are there any questions, or?
No, sir. Any questions from council?
So moved.
Been moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approve 5 to 0. Mr. Trapp left. Now down to our county administrators' report. Ms. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. Farmers Market, I think that's been pretty much addressed already, but I did want to say that we had a very good opening event, and then the following weekend did well also. We were, again, the building is one thing, but I want to thank Mr. Brad Hoffman and Valerie Clowney, because what they did brought it to life, the program that they did, bringing the farmers and artisans together, that's what really brought life to the building. Next, we have...
I got several questions. During the, I guess during the recess, there's a couple of things, is, one of them is, how much did the farmer, how much did the county have to pay for the farmers market?
We already own the building, the total, and we did pull it since the last question you had asked. We have about 58,000, I think, total in the building now.
58,000?
Yes.
And there was another question asked during the recess, too, is about the, is about procurement. Did we use the...
Did we use the procurement process?
This is one of those things, again, going through. And when we redo buildings, we have maintenance funds, but we never reached where we had to bid anything out, really, because each individual item that we did on this, we did, for the most part, all this in-house. So individually, none of the items, such as purchasing wood and things like that, never reached the procurement where you would have to bid it out.
Okay, so none of the items that we purchased was over $2,500?
No, they were over $2,500, but that doesn't require us to put it out for bid.
It does not?
Not for... We can get quotes and things like that, but it's under that threshold, we do not. No, sir.
If I may interject, I've been working closely with Mr. Taylor, and if purchases were to come up that he'd need from council, if it ever to exceed that amount, he would let me know, but it never came to that threshold yet, so...
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Next, we have Ms. Denise Bryan, who is a Director of our Fairfield County Airport, to give us an update on things that she has going at the airport and also the Wings and Wheels, to give us an update on that, how that event went.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Chair. I think the first thing that I'm going to update you on is the fuel farm. There's been a few questions about it. We are moving forward with the fuel farm. We have paid $59,000 down to have the tanks manufactured, and they are in manufacture right now as we speak. The current update from the company called Abicon in Titusville, Florida, that's doing our fuel farm, came today, and I'd like to read you an email statement that he sent to me today. Says, "We are waiting on a delivery date from the tank manufacturer. As soon as we get the date, we will let you know. We're going to push them to get them done." Drawing should be... The drawings should be done in a few days, so we can schedule the concrete and the electrical. We are planning on having this done in four to six weeks. The Jet A cabinet, which we have a separate location for our jet fuel dispenser, it's a box that they're going to build, he says, "The jet cabinet is in production now, and we're going to prep all the parts to be installed on the tank before the tanks get here. We are trying our best to keep the July installation date." And you can see, I have a schedule that I gave you guys, and we're a little bit behind on the May things, but he addressed some of that in the email. And then there's also a diagram. I want to talk to you a little bit about three-phase electric. You have to have... You should have three-phase electric to run the pumps for the fuel tanks that we're getting. We did not realize until recently that the airport only has single-phase electric. I've been working with Fairfield Electric to try to get three-phase electric out to the airport facility. I don't know if anybody knows how expensive it is to get three-phase electric to a location, but I have been working with Fairfield Electric, and they have graciously volunteered to run three-phase electric out to our airport facility at no cost to us. They've also donated the conduit that we need to get the electric from a junction box that they're going to put in to the airport facility, which is across the street from where the junction box will be. But that will increase our costs a little bit. We have to get an electrician to run it from the junction box to the airport facility. And you can see in this diagram that I gave you, this is from Fairfield Electric. It shows where they have three-phase already existing. These lines were right here along the airport runway road. They were going to run it under the ground here to the airport, but they actually decided to bring it above ground around Cathcart Pond. It's going to be cheaper for them to do that. So we're getting three-phase electric out there to run these pumps. So that's just part of what we've been working on with the fuel farm. I have a gentleman here. His name is Mr. Alan Blevins, and I'd like to introduce... He's one of our hangar tenants, and he just wants to say just a few words about our fuel farm.
Chairman, Council. I'm a tenant at the airport. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you supporting this fuel farm. You know, aviation fuel is a lifeblood of commerce for aviation. You have a state-of-the-art airport here. What I say about... What I mean by that is you have two precision instrument approaches at your airport, and you also have new LED lighting. So I, as an instrument pilot, can come down to as low as 250 feet above the airport and land my plane, as long as I have the required visibility. Now, with the LED lighting, it makes it a lot easier to be able to see the runway when you get down below the cloud layer, so that you can land safely. So that, coupled with having the aviation fuel, I landed a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't take off because I didn't have any gas. They were out at the airport because of the temporary situation we have. Fortunately, the next day, they did have it back. But, you know, with having that fuel farm, it's going to allow me and anyone else that comes in here to have the access and availability of having aviation fuel, which really is a lifeblood. We also have state-of-the-art security. I've never been to an airport, rural airport, that has the kind of security this airport has. It's another thing I want to thank you for. So I appreciate it, and thanks for supporting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Really appreciate him coming out on this evening. I'd like to talk about... Does anybody have any questions about the fuel farm?
Council, have any questions?
Just could you explain a little bit more what the impact of this would be to the county, having this?
Well, last year, when I started as the Airport Director, almost two years ago, several of you know the situation with the old fuel tanks. They were... They needed to be pulled up. So we've kind of been forced into this situation with the fuel farm. You have to have fuel in an airport. We have a flight school that operates out of there, and for economic development, you can't bring in companies that we need to come into Fairfield County and develop company commerce without having fuel available. We just have to have it. You can't be in an airport without fuel. Is there any other question? No? Okay. I'd like to talk about our Wings and Wheels event. It took place on May 11th, which is always the Saturday before Mother's Day. I attempted to increase the air traffic this year, so we did a little bit more advertising on radio stations than we normally do. I think we would have really had a lot more air traffic turnout if the weather would have cooperated a little bit more. We had some... We did the skydiving jumps, and we had about... The first time ever, we actually tried to count the number of people that came out. We had about 900 people come out to the Wings and Wheels. And from what I've heard, I've had all good comments. So we'll continue with that, and we'll do it again next year. And I... Oh, excuse me. I want to thank the Aeronautics... My Aeronautics Commission members that assisted with the Wings and Wheels. I'd like to thank the tenants out at the airport, Brian Steed with SNS Aviation, that assisted with the Wings and Wheels. And of course, I would like to thank the council for supporting that event. And the Chamber of Commerce. They assist me in planning that process. Financially, I couldn't do that event without them. I don't have the capability financially to support that event. We don't have credit cards and checks and things like that. And the Chamber actually takes care of some of that for me, and then we reimburse them for that. They pay out on that day. But I couldn't do it without the Chamber of Commerce. And Aviation Week in the state of South Carolina is August the 19th through the 24th this year. The governor always has a proclamation for the week of aviation in the state. And then Fairfield County, last year, we also did a proclamation, which we plan on doing again this year. I don't know if everybody knows, but I'm a board member now on the South Carolina Aviation Association. I was elected this past February to be on that board, and I'm also on the Aviation Week Planning Committee and Safety Committees. So for Aviation Week this year, what our airport is going to do, and everybody's really excited about it, is SNS Aviation, our company that has the flight school out here at the airport, has offered two free 30-minute exploratory flights for high school students. And we're giving one to Fairfield Central High School and one to Richard Wynn High School. I've spoken to the principals, and they're going to hold some type of competition for current juniors in high school right now, because Aviation Week is one of the first two weeks of school when they return next year. So the person that will be winning will be a senior next year when they return to school, and they will get a free airplane ride, exploratory flight with SNS Aviation. We don't have to fund any of that. Brian's covering all of that. And then also, we're also doing, on the last Saturday of Aviation Week, 20 Boy Scouts are coming out with the Boy Scouts of America. Myself, the flight instructors, and Brian are all going to assist these young gentlemen in getting their aviation badges. And we're also, for $75, each student, 20 kids, will get to fly in an airplane. They're going to take three 172s that they have and three flight instructors, and we're going to give every single student a ride in the airplane. And these two events will be covered by media, so it's good advertisement for our airport and our county. So we're doing a lot out at the airport. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I don't have a question. Ms. Bryan, I want to thank you for all the work you do. And my family and I went to the Waynes over there, so we really enjoyed it. And again, thank you for all the work you do. And you can look at the facility now. You can almost tell that you were there.
Oh, thank you so much. And I couldn't do it without your help and Mr. Taylor's help and all the departments in the county. I'm the only one listed on the list out there for an employee, but I certainly don't do it by myself.
Thank you, Ms. Bryan. All right. Now, there is no Clerk to Counsel's Report. Now down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis?
We have three who wish to speak. First, Mr. Willie Burrell, speaking on the roads in Greenbrier.
Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Willie Burrell. I'm a resident of Greenbrier. Also, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Zone and a Peabody. I came out tonight to talk a little on the roads in Greenbrier. Marcella Road is one of them. If you ride on Marcella Road, you don't have to go to Cowwind, because every two to three feet, you got a pothole. That is ridiculous. I was in another area where about 200 to 300 people, and they got new roads. I couldn't believe it. We out there got over 500 to 600 people to live on Marcella Road. If you ride Marcella Road, you see that we got a church there, we got a school out there, and some other things. We need to look at that. Also, we need to look at Greenbrier Fire Station out there. One of the first ones that was out there, and I was a volunteer on the fire department at the time, I ride down through there now, it's still a steel building. I go around on the other counties, I see modern fire department, new trucks. That's ridiculous. We need to do something in Greenbrier. If we don't do anything in Greenbrier, we gonna do something else. To see that something is done in Greenbrier, not a threat, just telling you the truth about Greenbrier. Greenbrier is one of the oldest communities in Fairfield County. It should have had a new fire department for anyone else. It's not there. We should have new roads. It's not there. We need to do something. And I'm pointing at one of my council members over there, District Four. We need to do something in Greenbrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on Self-Serving Lessons in Greed.
Self-serving lessons in greed and racism. Saving Fairfield stopped the sitting council members, previous ones, from taking an additional $795 a month each in expenses on their expense account without a receipt, and it was accomplished by bringing it into the public's attention. Being a council member is an altruistic position. By making promises and being elected, we expect you to be moral, honest and fair, putting yourself last and the community first. This is not, I repeat, not a for-profit business venture for you or a popularity contest on Facebook. It's a test of your character and your reputation. This is the Me Too generation, where we publicly shame people who have hidden agendas and play games of greed for their own throne. Game of Thrones, threw that in there. Tell me, Mr. Trapp is not here and out, but I'm going to get it to him. Is the $15,000 salary we pay you insufficient for the 35 hours we expect you to put in? And that is, if you attend all the meetings, which you don't, and disappear in the middle of the meeting? You are aware that Fairfield Council has voted itself the highest salary per officer in the state, which is twice the salary of any other county council members in the state. So in the past six months, I see that Mr. Trapp has milked the county for illicit expenses of an additional $1,300 above the outrageous salary he already takes for not showing up or for walking out in the middle of a meeting. Take note of that. This is our money. We earned it, and for sure not to give it to you for padding an expense account or indoctrinating new council members on how to screw the public and milk the county out of taxpayers' money. The fact is, you own a cell phone and use it for your personal and private business. It has internet service, and you have the gall to submit bills to be reimbursed for something we all know is already included in your cell phone. Aren't you the man who buys votes for giving the kids in his district a $50 check when they graduate high school that we pay for and he gets the credit for? I think it's high time he got called out. We caught you once too often dipping your greedy hands in for a handout. Why is it, do you suppose, that Mr. Douglas, Mrs. Goen, Mr. Pauli, others have not submitted or zero requests for reimbursement while in office? It seems an obvious pattern of who's giving and serving the community and not asking for a damn thing in return. I see honor in true public service with some of you, just based on what I told you. I know we will reelect, and who will not be reelected are a one-and-done service term. To those of you new on the council, get with the program I have just laid out or get lost. This was a polite warning. Don't let us catch you again. Next time, I won't be so polite.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Stuck in the Middle.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One, Fairfield County. Quite frankly, as far as a couple of observations for this meeting tonight, this is not a prepared speech. Well, very few of mine are. But first of all, I want to, I guess, compliment this group. We had some disagreements, and it's good to see a council having disagreements, quite frankly. And everyone had their points, and right now, we've reached an impasse with those disagreements. But disagreements is good, and civic and civil disagreements are a good thing, and that moves us forward, and that's what democracy is all about. And I'm sure that we can handle these issues. Now, a couple of suggestions that I have, and I'm all about processes and research and knowledge, and I think you guys are aware of that. Quite frankly, I think that... I think a good hearing session, meeting, whatever, is prudent, not only for the council body, but also for those of us who sit out here. And that would be on the fund balance. What do we need for the fund balance? How much do we need in a fund balance? What is it designated for? Let's have a plan. I mean, everyone mentioned the fund balance tonight, but no one... but no one seemed to know, well, how much should we have in the fund balance? What are we going to use it for? Where is it going to take us? What are other counties having fund balance? So I think before we can make any progress on any future budgets, we need to understand the fund balance, and we need to come to a decision of what we're going to do with the fund balance and what we need to do with the fund balance. Remember, needs before wants. Another, another aspect that I would like to see us in all decisions in the future is set targets. Set targets and then work towards that target. For example, a budget. If we understand the fund balance, and if we know what we've got there, and we know what our revenue is, et cetera, what should be our target that we can afford in our general fund balance, in our budget, going forward? We need to set targets in, in all things. You don't just, like, you don't go out and buy a house and, or look for a house and say, well, I'm going to buy this million-dollar house. Oh, well, I can only afford $200,000. You set your targets before that. And the same way with buying anything. When you go to the grocery store, when you buy a car, whatever you buy, you set a target of how much you can afford. And that's what, that's what we should do. I, I really like the disagreements and the robust discussion, but you've got to understand the fund balance before you move forward with anything. And I think that should be the first thing on your next agenda immediately. Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you. Now down to county council time. Does any council member like to be recognized? Mr. Bell?
About two weeks ago, I asked Ms. Davis, our clerk to council, to locate a public building in Ridgeway, or District One, that could be possibly used for the Council on Aging. Hopefully, to set up a satellite location in the area. After much looking, Ms. Davis found none, zero. There was none. She then convened a meeting with Mr. Taylor, Ms. Connors from the Council on Aging, and myself. We met for about two hours brainstorming of ideas and possibilities of what we could do to help the seniors in the area gain access to the programs offered by the Council on Aging. She said with a great deal of passion, "Mr. Bell, I really want to do something in the area because there's a definite, a need in Ridgeway. But if we start picking up too many clients from that area, it will ruin it for the participants that come to Windsboro." And really, we don't want to do that, right? She told us with no uncertain terms, "I cannot do anything without a building." She had knowledge of grants availability, some other funding source, but nothing to the extent of them going it alone. I was impressed with her love of the work and her grasp of the needs of the, for the community, and especially those needs in the Ridgeway area communities. On Friday of last week, I met with Mr. Taylor in Ridgeway for about two hours. We looked and talked District One needs. And I had planned to go over, go through that list tonight, but decided against it. However, I want you to, to know some of my concerns on a very larger level, as I've already talked about some of them concerning senior citizens. Number two is the water was brought from Ridgeway to the gold mine past communities without having water in those communities, especially the Moot Harris Road. And then there's another place where water comes from, from the river road up Antioch Cemetery Road. But then it stops there in that affluent community, and we don't have water there. Okay, there are many more examples like this in District One. And I'm not saying that these conditions doesn't, doesn't exist in other communities. Yes, it bothers me. I spent a lot of time since being on council, talking to thought leaders, planners, doing some benchmarking. Last week while in Clinton, at the Economic Institute, the mayor of Clinton stated, "Until you meet the basic needs of the community and it's perceived as being fair for those communities, you will not be able to make steady forward progress." My goal while on county council is to help us make steady forward progress. All too often, if you're not very vocal, you get nothing. But let's begin to plan and think about poor and rural communities, who many times don't complain, and yet those communities are left out. Over the next few months and years, I will be seeking solutions to rural and poor communities without water and ways to give our seniors a better quality of life with the help of council and the staff. Again, I will be asking for your help. Some have suggested to me, just to, just to fight. I will not do that. Let me say that again. I will not do that. I support fairness and progress for all. We should all share the benefits of county government and our tax dollars. I support planning to get water in these poor and rural communities. I support planning to get senior citizens service to improve their quality of life. I support recreation in the local communities. I will keep, I will continue to be a voice for the needs of the county in District One. And to those who write and want to make me the villain for bringing the concerns of District One to the forefront, I will proudly wear that as a badge of honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Anyone else? Vice Chair Goen?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I hear the voice from Greenbrier. And I understand, and I am totally in agreement with you and have been for some time. I go through that area all the time coming to Windsboro, and I know we can do better. So I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to work with me, find out what we can do about the roads, not later, sooner, what we can do about the fire department, not later, sooner. I also want to ask, the eight, I think it's eight point some acres and, over in West Side, what's keep coming up? Do we have a plat of ownership of that property? Do we have anything to say that we own that property?
Property that Ms. Workman has brought up a number of times. We rode out there last week with Ms. Workman, with Brad and Russell Price from Recreation to look at the property, to walk the property. We are in the process of looking at the legal side to make sure we know what piece of property we do have. But we did put our boots on the ground. We walked it with Ms. Workman. She showed us the site. We're going to start at least doing what we can do in-house to clean that property up and make it accessible as a, essentially a passive park. If we can use our own crews to do that, do the grading. Because the site, I think they used it as a borrow pit almost to pull dirt from the front of it, which left erosion horribly, or the dirt running, the red mud back into the road. So we're going to address that, sod it, get it cleaned, and go down selectively, see if we can cut a road to where you can access the lake.
Okay, thank you. All right. Last council meeting, I was awarded a plaque. And I want to thank Chairman Robinson so very much and all of those that agreed for it. I want to thank you. I want to thank all the citizens that knew about it. But I talked to Clerk to Council Davis, and I talked to Chairman Robinson. And I'm very sincere about what I'm about to say. I'm not in competition with anybody. I'm not jealous of anyone. I'm not begrudging anyone. But the bottom of the plaque says, "The first African-American woman to be elected to county council." I have never, ever put a label on myself. I've never taught my children to label themselves. I've never addressed other people by label. When you use a name or term, it should not make you. You should make it be something. When I hear the comments that are made and all of the negativity and everything, I have to do what my heart says and my spirit says. I have to go back to what I know is right and what is true. We all came into this world without breath. We will all leave this world without breath. One is no better than the other. We all share the same air while we're here, and we are all created by the same Creator. I was not brought up in a house that I was taught hate, bitterness, and anger. My parents had an open door. For family, they had an open door for strangers. Didn't matter what color they were, how they smelled, where they came from. So do I. I taught my children the same thing. I do appreciate the thought. I appreciate the, the love that they have for me. But my love for humanity is greater than that. To be titled under something that I know brings division. And we talk about racism all the time, but many times the ones that talk about it are the racists. We talk about division many times, but many times the ones that talk about it are the dividers. My purpose in life that God gave me is to help build kingdoms, His kingdom. I can only build that through love, through compassion, through integrity, through honesty. So I'm going to return that plaque. I don't want them to redo it or anything, but I'm going to return it. Because by the grace and mercy of God, we are who we are, and I am who I am. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goen. Any other council member want to be recognized? All right. Just keep in mind, probably the next few days, we will receive an email from Ms. Davis. I'll get with the administrator so we can set another budget date up so we can go ahead and get that approved, so. All right. If not, there is no executive session tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved in proper second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Prove five-zero. We are adjourned at 7:35.